My name is Karen Ford. I reside at 105 Keddie Street in Springfield. I'm very disheartened to hear all of these streets that have not been plowed. I called the mayor's office on Thursday because five trucks in three minutes was down my street that had already been cut back to the curb. So, I knew then that I would hear these same stories when I came before you this evening. Disheartening as it can be, I think that there's a major problem with unaccountability. And I believe it starts with our mayor. It also goes over to DPW who allow these guys to come in and stay on the clock and milk the clock dry. It's a shame. It's a crying shame that my fellow residents have to be subjected when they come out in my neighborhood year after year and I make call after call to the official offices. This is a darn crying shame. And if you people don't hold them accountable, then what are we to do other than come and stand before you?
No, I'm not.
I am sick and tired. They've been encouraged to stay, but you see, some of them have gone. I guaranteed them they had my vote, but some of them have gone because it's a cop-out. They're looking forward to a failing industry coming in down the street because that's what they want, those jobs, when they have failed us as representatives here now. Another thing I have a question about, I probably won't get an answer to it, and I get it. Where are the 54 market rate apartments that are supposed to be in with this casino thing? It is my daily prayer that divine intervention will come and sweep that monster off the map. Another thing I have a problem with, I was down with a friend paying their taxes. Because she was $200 short of a $1,200 payment, they told her that they would not take a partial payment. Really? Where's the interest for the city there? I mean, come on, somebody do something somewhere. Would you prefer her, if it had not been her strong will and that casino was open, to say, "Well, you know what, I tried." And so what? Here we have another vacant building in the city.
Yes.
I get it, but those are my interests. Thank you.
Phyllis Gideon, 216 Fort Pleasant, longtime resident of Springfield. My question is, what is the follow-up practice after you've had three days of a storm and there's still slush and ice and piles of snowbanks around the corners? I was disheartened to see about, what is it, maybe about a week, week ago, I saw four DPW trucks passing large snowbanks, excess piles of snow all over as I'm coming through Forest Park going to my home, and no one's stopping to clean this up. I, as a resident by my home, do diligence to go back out, make sure when it's the melting of the snow, cleaning that up. I'm trying to understand, how much staff does it take for you to come back through to ensure that that's clean, right? Because we have DPW staff that we pay to go out and clean the city, we pay them to shovel, we pay them to plow. So, if you're not doing anything else on a snow day or after the snow has subsided, where are those staff to go back out and ensure the city gets cleaned up? That is your job. And so, my expectation with those tax dollars is that until the street is clean, until the snow is absolved and moved into space that people can properly pass, you have not done your job, not a day after, not two days after, not three days after. So, if you can explain to me what the process is of following up, identifying those individuals who have not done their job, what are the repercussions of those individuals, and then what do I do as a resident when I see that? Who do I call? Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Rhonda Latney. I have a voting residence of 91 Flint Street. I'd like to comment on everyone that's seen regarding the plowing. One point of interest that's concerned is that all these people, the vast majority of them who are doing the plowing, lives outside of Springfield. So therefore, they take more revenue out of the city, they don't have any personal commitment to the city, so really, they don't care. The second thing is my favorite, my favorite pastime, MGM slot poller. As Ms. Ford said, there's a huge concern...
We're having a public speak right now. We're just talking about the storm.
The storm, that's not what I was informed that, I was under the impression that this is a public speak-out?
This is not the public speak. This is still the maintenance and development meeting.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize.
That's okay.
For, oh, for the, oh, for the public, I apologize, everyone. Thank you. I'll be back.
I know, I know what I should do again. So, we have, we have about, oh, go on, sir, give your name and address.
Fred Trubrick, 6 Only Avenue, Springfield. I got a question. The budget for the salt. That sand and dirt crap, we need to stop that. It ain't doing anything. Everybody in every surrounding towns put salt straight down on the ground that helps for us to get underneath that heavy snow, because when the weather picks up, you can get the blade underneath it. Heavy snow, the people ride on top of it, and sometimes you're not going to be able to get underneath it, but the next day, you're going to have to drop them blades, kick all that stuff that's in the streets slushing around, kick it to the side, people, the residents are going to be upset that they got to shovel their driveways again, but that's the only way, because the holes of the snow is worse than the potholes in the street. You'll tear up your car. And a lot of people are tearing up their vehicles. And I believe they need to have salt put down through the whole city in the early part of the season, because when you go to every other town, the asphalt is white and their roads are clean and ours ain't. And our primary roads are wide open for everybody to come into the city and get to work, but I can't get off my street to go to work. I'm a little offended. And then, I asked the plow guys, "Hey, could you widen the street because I'm on a private way?" He tells me he's too tired. He don't want to do it. And then you call the supervisor, he's coming over to see you. He don't come see you. And I got a problem with the supervisor, because every route, every plow section has a supervisor that's supposed to be out there checking to make sure that these lanes are open. We're losing the lane on State Street to turn over to Wilbonham Road. That lane wasn't even plowed. Then you go up to Breckwood Boulevard, going up to, turn the right on to Wilbonham Road, trying to get kids to school. That lane's not plowed wide open. They don't plow to the curb. Unfortunately, I used to work there, and years ago, they made the plow drivers, all the truck drivers that's going to plow snow, watch a video. I asked, and I went to the mayor's office last month to find out what's going on with this procedure. Why can't we, something's got to be done. You can't keep doing things the old way. You got to change it up. And two, I know that budget needs to be increased for some salt. That dirt and sand and salt, get rid of that. Just put down salt, we won't have half these problems.
Thank you, sir. We have only about six minutes left, and I'm going to ask you, Donna, if you could in that five minutes, address, Chris is going to talk to me during the meeting, if you could address something.
Sure. Sure, absolutely.
And if you could just identify yourself.
Donna Carney, Director of 311. So, overall, I would say for the degree of the storm, I mean, we did have complaints, but overall, considering we had 12 inches of snow for March 14th, as Counselor Gomez had mentioned, we had 75 tickets. Now, for the most part, we're informing the residents during that first day of what DPW is doing, and that's why there's so few. The following day, March 15th, they went out and plowed again. So, there weren't that many tickets for the degree of storms and for the number of miles that Chris just told us that we have. We had a total of 320 quick tickets, which we were taking information down, and 214 tickets related to plowing. So, when you put it in relationship to the number of streets that we have, yes, it was bad, and I've spoken to some of you, I think I spoke to you. I do hear you, and I think there are more exceptions than it was the norm. It was an unusual storm. It was two of throughout this whole winter, and I think DPW was out there for many, many hours, and they did the best that they could, what their budget could do. 311 was there from 7:00 to 7:00 for the three days, and we listened to you, and we did put in the tickets as you requested, so...
Counselor Gomez wants to follow up with his question.
Yes.
When individuals call, what is considered success from 311? Not a successful call, when they call, when they call...
Well, any call that you call us about, I hope it is a successful one. We're taking...
Is there a time period, that time that once the call is received, it's received by DPW or by the department?
As soon as we enter it into the system, it's received by DPW. There is an integration between the two systems that might take some time, but it immediately goes to the cartograph system that DPW uses.
Is there a follow-up? Also, if somebody is having trouble with contacting 311, is there another way that they can get in touch with 311? If the lines are tied up, is there an email address or hypothetically a Facebook page?
Absolutely, there are ways to communicate with us. We have the web portal that you can go on your website and get a user ID and password. There's the 311@springfieldcityhall.com, and there's the phone app, the 311 Springfield that can be used with the Apple or the Android.
So, we have an app that's associated with 311?
Yes, we do.
And up?
Right? We advertise that right on Nextdoor this past week, so all residents should be aware of that. We have signs in all the bus stops, so...
No, I think that, I think that's some information that some of us did not know, that I think it's easier because everybody knows that once, it's proven fact that 90% of people, if they had email, text or something, they might have wrote to their phones. If, I think if a lot of us knew that we had an application that we could use, I think we'd see a lot more hits at 311 than 711.
Well, we've had, we've had it since 2011, and we did do a news broadcast on it. Yes, yes.
And thanks, Donna, for coming down. Just in terms of, I get a lot of calls from seniors.
Yes.
Seniors don't, really don't do Facebook.
Exactly, exactly.
They don't know how to call.
Exactly.
When I talk about Hungry Hill Center, Independence House, Amish, that's where my calls come from.
I agree.
Not even the least, okay? So, follow-up from Counselor Gomez's question. What is, so if someone calls 311, they call the mayor's office, or they call this body, that call goes over to you.
Right.
Did that call ever return? I mean, what happens with a call, with a complaint?
Well, we're an inbound call center. We're not an outbound call center that we're going to give you the answer. If we have the answer, we'll give it to you right then and there. That's the one call. But if you're calling about a street that needs to be plowed, we're giving that to DPW, and it's up to DPW to dispatch that out.
That was my question two minutes ago.
Sure.
Question goes to you.
What was that question?
You call to DPW.
Yep. Electronically, Counselor, what it does is it comes to us as a, excuse me, as a work order. Work order pops into our cartograph system immediately. As Donna said, it's an immediate type of thing. It's not like it takes an hour, or two, or four. It's immediate, it comes into our system. And let's say it's a complaint that a street needs to be sanded or needed to be salt. Immediately, what the desk does there is dispatch a truck that's in that area to that particular location, if it's a pothole, if it's anything. It then ends up going into the cartograph system and gets closed out as being successfully addressed by DPW. Then that is seen back on 311, so if somebody calls, that record is there.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt you again, but we do have to break for the public speak, and I apologize to my colleagues who didn't get a chance to ask questions, but the Counselor has been saying during the meeting report, you will have an opportunity to ask DPW and 311, any questions you didn't get to. I just felt it's more important to hear from our residents first. Thank you, and we look forward to getting all those questions addressed.
If you may stay.
Your name is Mimi?
I'm Donna.
Oh, Donna.
I'm Donna. I think I spoke to you on Monticello, because I think you called kind of early in the morning.
Yes, I did.
Yes, I remember. I remember.
I'd like to meet Mimi. I haven't met her yet, but I'll call.
Deb, nice to meet you. Who do you want to meet?
Mimi. To 311.
We have Gigi. Maybe you're thinking of Hannah.
No, her name is Mimi, because my name is Mimi, and her name is Mimi. It's hard to understand their names.
Is it? Yeah.
Because they... We're going to have to do something.
We will now get started with our public speak-out portion.
I know, I hear you. Well, it's a pleasure to meet you, and I hope it ends...
Thank you, everyone. We will now get started with our public speak-out portion of the meeting. We have nine minutes left until the start of our regular meeting, so please stick to your three-minute limit. There are three people signed up. You have three minutes each to address the council. The first person signed up is Rhonda Latney. Please come forward.
Thank you, everyone. How are you? Okay, getting back to the MGM slot poller. My huge concern is that we just found out information about the 54 market rate apartment. But with MGM being 15, halfway through this, their project, my concern is with the 54 market rate apartment not being completed by that date. And I do have a major concern with them being able to open up and run their slot poller when a lot of other, when the entire project has not been completed. Also, there's a major concern with the host community agreement with MGM and the kind of money that they are expected to be able to meet in order to pay out any kind of mitigation funds. And to my understanding, MGM has to reach at least, I think, $450 million before they are entitled to pay out surrounding mitigation funds. So, I'm looking for verification on that as well. Also, there's a concern with how much money is MGM is going to be allotted to complete this, their project, because they already had $950 million between now and next year. It's going to be over a billion dollars. And so, that means that they're already in the red. And how does that affect the host community agreement payouts as well? So, I'm looking forward to some of those answers, and I'm still praying that there'll be divine intervention that because of financial capability, culpability, that they won't be able to finish it and it'll be looking like it is. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up for public speak-out is Karen Ford. You have three minutes.
It probably won't take that long, because I've already bent your ear a little bit, however, comma. I am glad to stand before you yet once again with the concerns about this project down the street. I too pray daily for divine intervention. However, however he chooses to allow those doors to stay shut is my pleasure. I would like to have jobs come into the city, however, I think it's your responsibility, as if I had a contribution, that we need gainful wages in this city. This is already an economically deprived city, and to bring something of that nature, this is truly not the first time that I've stood before you with my concerns about that beast down the street. It is my desire that it would never open, and it is my desire that you all would somehow pull yourselves together and say, "What can we do really for the betterment of this city?" One thing that I would suggest, all of these people that come into the city, that work in our city, that utilizes everything in our city, deposits their waste in our city, we pay the cost. When is it no longer our responsibility, but when will you start taxing those people who come into our city outlining communities daily and deposit and waste? And it's at our expense. Can't you all get it? Everybody has to pay into this. The residents of the city cannot carry this. It's unfair. It's not even feasible. So, I'm asking that you all would give it some serious control, concern, and realize that we got to do something. What's working is not working for the betterment of the city, and I'm asking you all to take it seriously that all of your outlining communities, this one and that one that come in, it's pastime. It is pastime that they pay their fair share. If you work across state lines, you pay dual state taxes. I know that's true. So, if you live in another city, there ought to be some part of your wages that you earn here in this city that is obligated to this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker of the night is Mr. Russell Seelig.
My name is Russell Seelig. I live at 38 Oxford Street in Springfield. I'm here to talk about the possibility of another $225,000 revenue coming into the city that the city is really owed but is not collecting. And this comes about as part of its efforts to gather information for property valuations each year for the taxation of properties. The assessors send out what are called Information Request 38Ds to all owners of investment properties, of which there are somewhere between 2,200 and 2,400 properties in the city. These could also be sent to lessees who rent space in some of our buildings, but that is not the current practice. The purpose of the 38Ds, the information requests, is to learn about the gross income expenses and net income for these parcels of land. A net income example is what the owner of an apartment building gains from renting space in his apartment building, and it has nothing to do with the income of the residents of the building. The net income to the parcel is then used to estimate a fair cash value for the parcel. The fair cash value is then the assessed value by state law, 100% fair cash value, and it's that number on which the property tax is based. This is very different from valuing our homes, which are done by comparing our homes to others that have sold in the neighborhood. So, this is an income approach to value as opposed to a sales approach to value. About half of the 38Ds are returned. The other half are not returned. So, we have about 1,100, maybe 1,200 38Ds that are not returned, the majority of which are commercial or industrial properties. And the city can enact a penalty of $250 against those parcel owners of commercial and industrial parcels, and $50 against those owners of four-family and larger residential parcels. Based on information from the assessors, these penalties are not enacted by this administration for one reason or another, but they would amount to $225,000 a year approximately, at least for the first year. The proposal is on your desk, along with the mass general law that supports this information. In future years, the revenue stream would likely diminish as more parcel owners and lessees respond to the information request, but the added information will enable the assessors to more accurately determine their fair cash value for more parcels in the city and avoid some of the undervaluations that have been seen on various parcels throughout the city, and that would increase the direct property tax revenue. This is also a matter of property tax equity. Our homes are valued at 100% of fair cash value, whether, and this is true for residential and commercial who send in their information requests, 38Ds, to the assessors. Those who don't send in the information requests may well be, may well have their properties undervalued, and they're not going to raise a think about that, they're going to fly under the radar forever. So, I would like the opportunity to present this case in more detail to the Finance Committee, if that's appropriate, and then look for its support going forward. So, thank you for your consideration, and are there any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. All right. The time is now 7:01. We will get started with our regular meeting. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Rook, absent.
Present.
Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Here. Counselor Marcus Williams.
Absent.
Counselor Ash.
Here.
Counselor Twigs.
Absent.
Counselor Shea.
Absent.
Counselor Fenton.
Here.
Here. Counselor Hurst.
Counselor Hurst.
Present.
Present. Counselor and the guests, please rise for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we call the first item, just a couple of reminders. Please set your phones on silent mode, and I was also reminded by the folks at Focus Springfield, please be sure to turn on your microphones when you're speaking and turn off your microphones when you're not speaking. I did also receive some complaints from constituents who were unable to hear portions of our last meeting, and so, please turn on your microphones when you're speaking. Thank you. We'll get started with Counselor Walsh.
Mr. President, if you can make an exception, because our DPW director has a time schedule, and several of my colleagues do not have an opportunity to ask questions in our maintenance and development meeting, if we could take that first.
All right. Without objection, we'll do reports of committee first. Okay? With the clerk, please recognize Counselor in seat number three.
Counselor Rook.
Present.
Present.
Are there any reports of committee? Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. We just had a very lively maintenance and development meeting that was called to discuss the response to Winter Storm Stella. There was a common theme with residents that came down being concerned about their own personal experiences and concerns about the types of trucks, the budget, giving support to the DPW, and why in some communities their streets look better than our streets. My colleagues, some of them did not have an opportunity to voice their concerns to the DPW director and to Donna Carney from 311. Counselor Williams, Counselor Gomez, who are on the maintenance and development committee who were in attendance, Counselor Fenton, Counselor Hurst, and I believe Counselor Allen joined us after the fact, so I would like to give them an opportunity to voice some of their concerns, and then we'll bring up what the residents had to say.
Okay. Is there, are there any questions or concerns of the DPW? Counselor Hurst.
Thank you. I just had one question. I think some of my colleagues touched on it. I just wanted to know what the process and timeframe is from the time in which a call goes to 311, to the time in which you receive it, to the time in which you actually take care of the issue at hand. It would seem to me that there should be some way that counselors, as well as the public, can monitor when a call has been made, where it has been made, and then to double-check to see whether DPW has followed up. I received a couple of phone calls this past snowstorm, but even the snowstorm before regarding Melrose Street, and they had mentioned that they had called 311... regarding Melrose Street, and they had mentioned that they had called 3-1-1 twice, and similar to the complaints that we heard earlier, you know, the gentleman was trying to get, you know, the nurse's aide to come to his mother's house, and he was unable to do so because the streets were so bad. And he called 3-1-1, called me. Another hour went by or two, called 3-1-1 again and said, you know, "What's going on?" I called 3-1-1, and then I get a response. Obviously, as a city counselor, you know, I don't know if you make my complaints priority, but when I called, finally, you guys seemed to rectify the situation within an hour. So I don't know if you have a timeframe, but it seems to me like we should have a timeframe as to when your DPW takes care of these issues, and we should be able to monitor so that we can respond to our constituents. It seemed to me that that should be...
Absolutely, Counselor. As I mentioned before, when a complaint goes into 3-1-1, a ticket is created. That ticket is immediately electronically delivered to the DPW and goes into our work order system. Immediately upon getting that, our work order system action is taken. Now, during a snowstorm, a complaint about "my street isn't plowed yet," we are not going to jump out of a system to go do a street. We're going to do that street when, because we have an order of how we do the streets and particular sections. One of the comments that, you know, we made was, "We're dealing with police, ambulance, fire calls, AMR." We probably did 75 AMR calls throughout the course of it. But during a snow event, if there is a complaint about a particular street not being plowed yet, that comes to us, and our response basically is, you know, "We're going to get to it in the course of an action unless there is an issue with it." And so that's really what it is. Now, after the storm, excuse me, if we get a complaint about "street needs to be widened, sanding, salting, et cetera," those are probably acted on within an hour, an hour and a half of them being received, because we're grouping them in neighborhoods. We have trucks in all the neighborhoods. All I hear on the radio is a call going out. "We received the complaint. We received the complaint." So I'd say with, and then on our side of it, it's called in that it's completed. It then shows up on 3-1-1's system as being addressed. So then 3-1-1, if they receive a call back, can then address it with the homeowner that something's been addressed.
So can the public see it somewhere? I mean, because this didn't happen the last snowstorm, not this past...
No, that is not an external system at this point. It's not set up through IT to be an external system.
Are we thinking about moving in that direction?
That is not up to me. That's an IT issue with the city.
Counselor Bud Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, Chris, this is a follow-up to the Storm Stella. And it states that we have supervisors that have a section of the city, and it's their job, when a street is plowed, to go to that street, drive down the street, and see whether it's done or not. Now, I don't know how long it takes for them to do that, but then you were screaming that people are on Facebook, they're on TV, they're on radio about the conditions. If we have a supervisor, and three days later, streets aren't done, the streets I went on, there were several of them, how do we hold that supervisor accountable in number two? And I have a list of the streets, and I want to know from you if that supervisor went down those streets and if those streets were reported as not being cleared? That's important. I mean, there's, something's got to give you. If you have a supervisor and you have all these streets that the public testimony was unbelievable, people were saying, and it's not your fault, you can't manage the whole 1,100 miles, but if we have supervisors, they should be held accountable. And if they're not being held accountable, I mean, I know you know what to do with them.
No. And in the city, every street was done. Every street was done at least twice by 6:00 PM on Wednesday afternoon, at least twice. Streets that have snowpack on them, we went out and start doing salting. And when you're doing salting on those, when you have a day like today, anything that's over 28 degrees with sun, that snow is just going to fluff straight up, giving the appearance that it wasn't plowed. We go out and you see the snowbanks on the side of the road. It was plowed. Once snow becomes that hard pack, we're either continually plowing and salting, or we're sanding it depending upon the condition of the roadway. So when people call and say "the road's not done," we go out there, we look at it. We also make a decision as to whether or not we're going to plow that, because depending upon the condition of it, three days later, if there's piles of slush and stuff in the street, the last thing we want to do is put that in somebody's driveway, especially when it's 20 degrees at night, it's going to freeze solid. So we sand it, we salt it again, and over the course of a couple of days, that goes away. But a majority of the streets that had major snowpack on them, we hit them at least three times, and then we are going back and we're plowing them, we're sanding them, and we're salting them.
Okay. Who makes the decision whether or not to do the street again? Is it the supervisor? Do they have to report?
It's a combination. During the storm, it's that particular supervisor. After the storm, it's our foreman and our senior staff who are out looking at all the roads. Usually, when we get a complaint through 3-1-1, it's not just a staff member that's going out to look at it. It's usually one of the supervisors, even all the way up to myself and Vinnie, that are going out and looking at it, because, you know, a lot of the complaints that we get, you know, when somebody says "this didn't happen" or "that didn't happen," I'm very interested to see what it looks like. So we go and we take a look at it. You know, the biggest complaint that we received during this snowstorm was plowing people's driveways in multiple times. That was the major complaint that we dealt with in the city.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
You're very welcome.
Counselor Ash.
Chris, I apologize if the question was... What is the threshold? What causes someone's car to get towed in the street? The reason I ask is, it wasn't a lot, but I've seen several cars...
Seems like every storm, the same cars are plowed in until the snow melts again. I'm just wondering, and I don't see it widespread, but I do see it, you know, occasionally. What is the threshold that causes them to be towed?
Basically, if they're parked on the wrong side of the street at the wrong time, they're going to get ticketed, and they're most likely going to get towed. That being said, every snowstorm, we kind of have a circle that we start with. We start with the main routes, and we deal with, very simply, Goodwin Street and Indian Orchard, Belmont, Fort Pleasant, Forest Park Avenue, Sumner Avenue, White Street, Dickinson Street, and the side streets off of it. This last storm, we did 580 tickets and 180 toes in the city. And, you know, we started at 9:00 in the morning on that day, went to 4:00, between 4:00 and 7:00 is a grace period, and then started up again at 7:00. You know, I mentioned Goodwin Street and Indian Orchard. We probably towed the same person's car three times. And Belmont Avenue probably towed three or four people's cars three times. One of the things that we used to do is, okay, let's go to a different neighborhood, but when the same person is parking, you know, we kind of hope people get the message not to do it, but it's like, you know, you need to have Belmont Avenue, you need to have Dickinson Street, you need to have Forest Park Avenue and Fort Pleasant, and those are the ones that we spend all of our time on in the city. And just as a note on that, the DPW does not tow, the DPW does not ticket. It's a police department function. We oversee the process of it. I wish I had the authority to ticket and tow. I would love it if you gave it to me, because there would probably be a lot more...
So I'm sorry, I just have a follow-up there. So if you see a car, you recommend that...
We call the police.
And they can sometimes say, for whatever reason, "No, we're not going to do that."
Usually, what happens is that it's going to be a function of the tow company, whether we can get there, and the police officer will probably say the same thing. He goes, "Do you want me to ticket these six cars or those six cars? Because I'm going to do the whole street, and it's a matter of, we're never going to get to the whole city down the storm."
Okay.
We could probably ticket 3,000 vehicles if we wanted to.
Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Chris, my line of questioning here, I've got a couple of questions, is more on the post after you've already plowed. And the supervisor, the role of the, is that the supervisor, there's...
Zone inspector.
Zone inspector?
Correct.
Is there, there's 20 zones, so there's 20 inspectors?
Correct.
So how does that work? Do they, do they go over the zone as soon as you start plowing, or is there a first pass? What gets them started inspecting?
In a very typical snowstorm, what they do is they meet the plows, they sign them in, they all get a time when they're there, and they start working on the main routes. It is the inspector's job to split the trucks up into, you know, he's dealing with six, seven, or eight of them in his route, split them up onto particular streets to be able to efficiently get the work done as possible. You know, a road like Boston Road or Sumner Avenue is going to require all the trucks simply because of the width of the road to be able to get that done, where other areas don't require that. So they split them up based upon that. In the storm, they work the main routes. When the main routes are complete, they're calling us constantly. We have our system that electronically shows when streets are done. They move into the neighborhoods. Each one of those zones is probably split up into two or three major groups. The zone inspector's job is to basically follow the plows around and report to us that a street is complete. This particular snowstorm, what we did is we worked on the main routes till about 2:00 PM. At that point, when we knew we were going to get massive amount of snow, we moved them into the residentials to start doing some quick passes to get those, at least a pass through the road. One of the complaints that we got is, "Hey, a truck came down our road and did a single pass." Yeah, we know. That's what we were trying to do to get that road open. We didn't want to go back when there were 16 inches. So at about 6:00, when they did that, we then went back, did all of the main routes again, and did all of the residentials. At that point, we stopped, salted everything, then came back at 8:30 in the morning and did the entire city again the third time. So each one of those routes, those inspectors are following the trucks around and reporting back to us that streets are complete. At the same time, they're also reporting to us that Street A, B, C, D, and E is impassable either because of cars or people are snowblowing out into the street. We need to get ordinance officers, we need to get police officers, we need to get ordinance, people from the ordinance crew out there to do that. So each one of them is reported to us, and if we can get an officer out there to deal with the ticketing and towing on a particular street, we can address that street. When we're dealing with parking on both sides, all we can do is kind of just barely push the snow off to the side, because we don't want to really plow in the cars heavy. And on major streets, and in a lot of the area of the city, we're dealing with pickup trucks. Pickup trucks are not going to move 16 inches of snow. City of Springfield had 16 inches of snow. 16 inches of snow is a rare event in the city, and it seems, you know, we can handle anything very easily up to 12 inches. After 16 inches, it becomes very, very difficult. Complaints from some of the citizens talk about piles of snow at the intersection. That's where they go. That's where the snow's going to go. We can't make it disappear, we can't dump it, we can't haul it until the state says that we can. And so that's, you know, kind of an overview of the system from the inspection standpoint.
So it seems to me, we talked a lot about the plowing, the decisions where to plow and stuff, is there a process for the complaints that come into Donna, to 3-1-1, to get to this? To me, there's, the supervisor-inspector thing is a really good idea. It just doesn't seem like it's working at the level that it could work.
No, it works. We'll sit there in snow control, and I don't see Ray Herschel here. Ray spent the entire snowstorm, the past two, in our snow control center. And one of the things that he said is, you know, the amount of complaints, and I don't use that, I use that word in general, you know, ambulance assists, fire assists, you know, people calling us up because they have a doctor's appointment that they want their street plowed right now. What we end up doing on those is try to get as much information out. If there is a complaint that comes in that says, "Hey, Street X hasn't been plowed," but we show on our system that it has been, immediately call the supervisor and say, or the inspector, "Hey, go back out there and double-check that street to make sure it's been plowed," because we want to make sure, is it a timing issue, or did they not do a good job, or did somebody report something that they shouldn't have? Once those come in, they're acted upon within our office immediately, because we get those from Donna immediately.
Well, I would just suggest that, to me, that's, you know, I know we have a difference of opinion on it, but I don't want to make a big deal of that, but I think that's a great system that somehow, if, I don't know, is it the same person who schedules the plows in that district is the person who's also the inspector?
The person who schedules the plows in that area, what they're doing and where they're going, is that inspector, and he's the one that we give the complaint to that has to do it. And what I would, I would love it, the next time that we have a snowstorm, I would welcome all of you to come and watch how we do it. And if you look at something and think that it can be done better or differently, we welcome it. But I think you'll then get a much better idea as to how we go about addressing the issues, the way that the complaints come in, and the way that we deal with it. And as I mentioned, you know, two storms, whether I call it lucky enough or not, we've had the press there for all of those storms, and they've helped us through it. The one thing that has not been touched on, and at 4:00 during the height of the storm, we received a call from MEMA of the DPW employee in Long Meadow that was killed. I'm going off-script here. If it was a police officer or a fire officer, we'd be hanging banners. Nothing. Silence. Nothing. MEMA wanted us to put a plan together to go plow Long Meadow, because they do it themselves. We had to put that plan together. In the end, it wasn't needed, however, we were in place to be ready to do that. That shook a lot of people up, because the initial report that went out was "DPW worker killed plowing snow." Now, you have a husband, son, brother, who's out there doing that, and that's the report that you hear on the news? You know, we had to regroup on that, and we were ready to help out Tongalana Meadow at the request of the state. And in the end, as I said, we didn't need to do that, but that's the sort of stuff that we do for each other. And their director is a former employee of mine and of the city's, and we had a lot of conversations, and we needed to be in place to be able to help them. And we were ready, willing, and able to do so over there, and we had a plan in place to do it. So 16 inches of snow, three inches in an hour, in two hours, six inches in two hours, is a unique event. It is not a seven-inch snowstorm, it's not an eight-inch snowstorm. We can do those very, very easily. I was very happy with the effort of my people working and have worked 16 hours on and ate off since the storm. Most of them have been doing that. And I'm very proud of the work that they've done and will continue to do over this storm. They get hurt by complaints, and when they go out and look at something and say that this is the best that we can do, given the circumstances, given the equipment, given the time, and given the type of snowstorm, that's what it is. And I'm going to go back to, I welcome all of you, any of you, at any time during a snowstorm, please come sit with us and watch how we do it.
Well, thanks. I can probably take you up on that when we have the next snowstorm, whatever it is.
You have to bring the food. You have to bring the food.
All right. I'll start saving. Thanks for your efforts, and thanks for shedding light on that horrible situation and what that meant as well. So I appreciate the efforts. We all appreciate the efforts. Just, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to, I'll try and be brief, because I know we've been at this almost a half hour. Chris, what's the fine, two and a half maybe, what's the fine for violating the parking ban?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, because I know my neighbor Deborah said earlier that it was $15, and my immediate reaction was to lean over to Counselor Hurst and say, "That cannot possibly be right." So, Mr. President, I'm going to look into that, and personally, I think it should be much closer to $100. Maybe that would also help with not necessarily needing to tow every vehicle if that results in some better compliance. But I thought that that was a good point that came out there in the committee meeting that I wanted to follow up on. Again, regarding the parking ban, I got an email from a constituent on Los Angeles Street about being ticketed on Saturday, which is the 18th. And I understand that the parking ban was still in effect, because when I got the email, I was on the road, and I happened to notice the blue blinking light at a few different intersections. So can you explain to us the logic there in having a parking ban for that long?
We keep the parking ban on as long as we're dealing with sanding, salting, treating... We keep the parking ban on as long as we're dealing with sanding, salting, treating, you know, minor plowing that we need to be able to get down a street with a big truck. All of the complaints that are dealt with in the city after the storm are done by us. And we're dealing with our big trucks. And one of the issues that we need to do is to be able to get down the street. We kept, excuse me, we kept the parking ban on until 9:00 this morning, to be able to, since that time, deal with issues and complaints. And usually, on a typical storm, you know, it might be two days, it might be three days. This one was kept on a little longer. One of the problems that we had with this one is that during the day, we were getting a ton of melting, and at night, we were going down to 15 degrees or so. So the freezing was happening all the time. So we knew every night we were going to have to go out and do a lot of treating all the way around into the morning.
It just sounds, I mean, it's a hardship in and of itself for a lot of folks, particularly if it's a more densely populated street, or if there's some multifamily dwelling units in the street and in the vicinity. People don't always have off-street parking. And I was pleased to learn that the Springfield Parking Authority was offering storage rates for residents that were very low. Was it just a couple of bucks?
Two bucks. Two bucks for the whole event.
Was that maintained during the entirety of the parking ban, which went, until this morning?
I think it-
I can't imagine, I mean, I parked there, and that lot is pretty full.
I think it finished the end of the day Thursday. I know it was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I don't know if it went to Friday.
Just in terms of feedback, I think that is unfair. It's unfair to say that we're going to offer a discounted parking rate for folks, for a parking ban. And if we are going to have it for six days, and we really need it for six days, it just, I think it creates an enforcement issue. Because there had to be hundreds of people parked on the street in the last couple of days who didn't realize, maybe, you know, to their own error by, you know, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. But, you know, they, I guess what I'm saying is, by having the parking ban in effect for that long, and allowing some of the other tools that we enable folks to have, to have them comply with the parking ban, makes it difficult to have even enforcement, let's say. Because I can't imagine that we were out there ticketing every car that was parked in the road on Sunday.
No, it's usually-
But it was happening on Saturday, at least on Los Angeles Street. And so this person was very upset, and I can imagine why. They had made arrangements for the first few days of the storm, and then afterwards were surprised when they were ticketed. So, okay, so those were the two points. I'm going to follow up on what the fine is and get back to the council president on that. And if it is as low as Deborah says it is, then we will make a proposal to increase that. And then the final, oh, wow, 15 bucks. Thank you, Deborah. Research done. So Attorney Davis, at your convenience, if you could just put together a change, an ordinance amendment, I'd like to sponsor, I don't know if anybody else would like to, to increase that fine to $100 for violating the parking ban. We can have a discussion of whether or not that amount is appropriate later. And then the final question I have, Chris, is regarding the Holyoke St. Patrick's Day Parade and Road Race. Did we provide any assistance to that municipality for that?
We did not.
We didn't?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
How you financially support that money?
So Gomez.
Thank you, Chris. Just have a question, and this is just trying to be proactive with, I think the main concern that I read in a report that we both shared was that nobody's complying with parking ban. And what we were talking about was, well, Mike Counsel Fenton was to enforce the fine to go up. But I have a question on, in school parking lots, do, are we responsible for shoveling those?
The facilities department does the school parking lots.
So they have their own shovels, their own trucks to do that?
They contract, they're plowing out, they have some of their own plows. Most of it is done by a vendor.
By a vendor?
Yeah.
I remember I had stated kind of a resolve or a solution to try to figure out how we can become more resident-friendly instead of business. And a lot of people have stated that it's a hardship to pay even $100 or $130 on a tow. So what I had kind of, I spoke and I asked was, I know we can't do this overnight, but do you believe that we can create a system, which I didn't know also about Springfield Housing, oh, not Springfield, the public parking, that they offer the $2 storage of most of these parking lots that, because when they're off, on the street, the most important part, what I would think about, is the safety of the road, and how do we get these cars off of the road? And what I proposed was, why can't we create a system where these cars that are on the side streets use parking lots that are available, and we can create a moratorium so they can move their cars during these parking bans into school parking lots that are near their houses? And then also on top of it, until you guys can widen the streets and effectively push the snow wherever it needs to be. And then from there, while the parking ban is on, it's like kind of a moratorium that they won't get towed or ticketed. And probably some of these Springfield Housing Authority parking lots would see, would see a lot of illegal parking, and we understand that we try to combat that. But I believe the most important thing that us as a city is to get the cars out of the way, and putting them in a safe place, so then we can safely move them out of the way. And then from there, I think we won't see the influx or the thought of, we have to get to all these cars and ticket them. Because I think if we gave them an option, we would see a lot of these, I think these cars, not on the road, we have elementary schools, we have middle school parking lots, we have a lot of parking lots that aren't being utilized, that I feel that we can create a system, which I think that, probably not by next week, but by the next season, we can create a system, and we can be more pro-resident instead of pro-business, and really hurting our constituents. And I've said it at Snowstorm Nemo, and I really, and I hope, and I'm going to take your offer, I'm going to be right there in that truck with you guys, whenever that next snowstorm is. And I know a lot of people believe that sometimes the rhetoric that goes on in the media is what the truth and the facts of the matter is. And for folks to really understand that to do this job, and to do your job, it takes a lot of guts. It takes a lot out of people to do the right thing. But fact of the matter is, if we don't work collectively, and if we tend to shallow ourselves to not work effectively, and use every single platform, which Donna had created a situation, and that we didn't know about, was that there's an app, which I'm going to heavily put on my social media. But I want to know if you're willing, if, is it your call that we can create kind of a system to try to work with situations like that, like opening Tower Square, or opening these garages so people can get off the street?
It's not my call primarily. We have talked about from time to time about opening up the schools. Because if you open up a lot of the schools, you're going to have a lot of parking. The issue with that, primarily the concern from the school department, becomes, okay, are we going to have school the next day? And if we're having school the next day, is everybody going to be, are we going to be able to clean the lot and get everybody in there? If the timing is right, you know, we're talking about a weekend, we're talking about a vacation, or we know ahead of time that there's going to be a couple of days of it, I would love to be able to do something like that. I know my friends from facilities are probably not going to be happy about it, because they're then going to be dealing with parking lots that are going to be driven over, and, because people are going to come right away and get their car, and try and go out, and things like that. I would love that. I would think it would be a thing that we could definitely explore with everybody. It has been talked about. It hasn't been followed through for various amounts of reasons, but we have golf courses, we have all sorts of city properties that can be utilized.
Good idea.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chris.
Counselor Rook.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, I just had a couple of questions. How many phone calls did you receive from city councilors during the storm? So, we have 16 inches of snow, 1,400 complaints were filed.
75.
Yep. Total of 1,400 the second day, which is the big store. And there's 40,000 households in the City of Springfield. That comes out to 3.5% of the residents who complain. So to kind of keep things in perspective, in business, that's a good day. In the public sector, that's a good day. Sometimes in government, we focus on the smaller issues. Everybody complained about the snow. My mother must have called me six times. I told her I called you six times. Mom, I lied. But her street was plowed eventually. And some of the difficulties are the parking that we spoke about, and Counsel Gomez, and Counsel Fenton. But I don't think we should lose focus of the fact that, I don't know how many miles of roadway you guys plowed in your team.
1,100.
1,100. And you've got 3.5% of the people who were upset that called in. That's a good day. That's all I want to say, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Chris, just for a point of clarification, I did reach out to you during-
You emailed me.
Yes, I did.
You emailed me.
You forgot Facebook.
Anyone else?
Counselor, Counselor Marcus Williams emailed me as well.
We have 1,400.
That's why I hesitated for a second, I was going to say.
I think Counsel Rook forgot all about Facebook. I'd like to say, Mr. President, that in the meeting we just had, where our residents came down, everybody acknowledged that it was a major storm, winter storm Stella, that it's a big job, that it's a hard job, they appreciate the work that the DPW does. But to me, the difference between this meeting and what we're hearing now, it's like a tale of two cities. People clearly have concerns about the snow. They were concerned about the sidewalks, the bus stops, how the streets were plowed, how there is still snow left after the streets were plowed, how their driveways are snowed in, and the fact that there are so many small trucks being used. So I believe that it's our responsibility as elected officials to listen to these concerns. This is our job, to respond to the complaints that we get, whether through phone calls, Facebook, and I got many phone calls this weekend, and I was at the St. Patrick's Day Parade, so I didn't get to respond to all of them. But it's just, it's the ebb and flow of government, that we get the concerns, people knew there was a meeting tonight, that they'd have an opportunity to bring up their concerns at this meeting, and that many people attended our meeting. But I think that we are doing the right thing by asking these questions. I think that is our job, to ask these questions and have them answered. And I have a couple of questions that were not answered. And this was sort of touched on with the constituents that came down about the trucks that were used. Do you have enough resources to address all these concerns? And would we be better off if we only had DPW trucks plowing?
I need, with the amount of vehicles that we had for this storm, when you do 160, an average storm, 160, it is going to take us 12-plus hours to do the city with the amount of miles that we have. So if you wanted to do the equivalent with DPW trucks, you're going to have to get me, I have 20. You're going to have to get me 120. You're going to have to get me 100 more employees.
You need 120 more trucks?
To make the equivalent of 100 and-
Oh, in your budget request this year, have you asked for more equipment?
No.
No.
No, because in order to ask for more equipment, I have to ask for more people. People who drive these trucks require CDL licenses. I have to have the, it's not just a piece of equipment, it is the employee. So when we're looking at, you know, getting another truck driver, we also need the truck to put him in. And so you're looking at, you know, $30,000, $40,000 for another employee.
Have you requested more employees in the budget?
Not necessar, well, in the budget, we did, because there are certain tasks that we put in as a, as a, I use the term wish list, and that's what the finance has been looking at. We have different things in there for sidewalk crews, snow plowing, and then the issue becomes, okay, we have all these trucks for snow plowing, what are they going to do the rest of the year? You know, do we have enough resources to address, you know, paving our own roads, doing our own sidewalks? You know, that sort of thing then becomes kind of a multiplier from a budget standpoint.
And I know that on my own street, at the top of Magnolia Terrace, there was snow there for a long time. And I barely missed a car because of the snow. And I'm sure other people had the same thing. Well, I hope that you do ask for more people, and that we'll be able to support you. Because people want their street clean, and they want it cleaned down to the pavement. And I did not see that as I traveled through the city. So I would like to follow up with Counsel Gomez and working with you, to see what can be done. If you need resources, we will try to advocate for you. But clearly, there are many people that were disturbed, that I heard from, and I'm sure you all did, about the conditions afterwards. And that is not to say they don't appreciate what the DPW workers do, because we do. They just want better service.
Counsel Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just to follow up on Counsel Rook in terms of the calls. I receive calls from every neighbor in the city, from Hunger Hill, East Forest Park, Forest Park. But the bulk of my calls were from Mason Square and the North End. So Counsel Rook, disproportionate, not being plowed, it's disproportionate. If you look at the streets and the calls that I receive, the bulk of my calls were from Six Corners, North End, Mason Square, that area, the 12th, 11th and the District, basically. The District that I represent, the state rep. So you can't, you can't go by that, because people really feel they're not getting services. They don't feel the system is fair. The other thing, Chris, you said in public testimony earlier, that we can't get the heavy trucks, because they all want to go to Wilbraham. What is it going to take to get the heavy trucks on the private end to come to Springfield, number one? Number two, we used to use the trash trucks to plow. I mean, that's multitasking. Taking a trash truck, you used to plow, because on a snow day, you cancel trash. With a storm like this, you don't do it. Can we use the trash trucks to plow like we used to?
Trash trucks right now are not set up to do plowing. They're not manufactured that way. The previous question, I'm just drawing a blank here. Oh, the big trucks. About three years ago, following Storm Nemo, we started to disproportionately, the rate for a vehicle in the city, we set. So if you're coming in with a vehicle, in our bid document, it shows that if you have this type of vehicle, that's what your hourly rate is going to be. In some of them, we provide the plow, so that rate changes. What we did this year is we also put an incentive in for people to sign up early. So that if we had an early snowstorm, we, sometimes usually in November, we may only have 20 plows under contract. So we had an incentive with that. Over the last three years, what we've kind of done is disproportionately raised the rate for the bigger trucks in hope to get them. And every year, we get a few more. But the wear and tear on those trucks in the City of Springfield is really what the companies don't, or the individuals don't want to deal with. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of shifting, there is a lot of backing up, there is a lot of turning.
Is that the mobile?
It's wear and tear on the truck that they don't want to deal with. They lose a transmission.
I'm not familiar with that.
They break a plow system. They do something like that in our city. They lose all the money that they've made for that year. So they'd rather go for Mast D O T, they'd rather go for the towns that they're doing straight, long sections of road, that they don't have to deal with those issues. So just, you know, disproportionately, people are just not going to come here, but we've tried raising the rate. But we don't want to make it too much as well. So we've been raising it where we can, and we've done it every year the past three years.
So it's not that they don't want to come into the city? It's not they're afraid to come to Springfield to plow?
It's not that they're afraid to come here, it's basically the way that the city is. It's the type of geometry of the city, it's the type of streets, you know, the bigger trucks, you're having to do manual shifting. And you do that for 18 hours in a row, your truck's just going to get beat.
Well, how does the Boston's and the wishes of the world get it done, and the Hartford's?
City of Hartford is probably less than half the size of the City of Springfield with the streets. Boston, from a size standpoint, they are probably 400 to 500 vehicles in the city. A lot of them are city-owned. When we look at proportional size of us to other towns with lane miles, we're way under their ratios. You know, complaints that, hey, East Long Meadow did it in four hours. Well, East Long Meadow's got 110 miles of road.
Just while I'm thinking, does DOT do Boston Road?
DOT does nothing in the City of Springfield except 91 and 291.
Okay, well, why do they do Wilbraham and Chicopee, and they won't do Springfield?
It's a state route. It stops at the City of Springfield line, and we have responsibility for it. Just like Route 5 does on the backside of Forest Park. Right at the town line, it ends up, and it's a city responsibility.
And bicentennial, the same thing?
Bicentennial. Everything in the City of Springfield, except for 91 and 291, we have the responsibility for doing.
Even though they're state?
Even though they're state roads or state routes, yes.
And that's law? Why?
That's the way that it's been accepted in the City of Springfield. It's probably been that way for 50 years.
Oh, it's been accepted?
Yeah, well, that's the way that the state has done it. And because when you go into Wilbraham, you then are dealing with other rules and regulations on the right-of-way that go through the state for approvals. You know, if you're building, putting a building up, or you're trying to put a curb cut in or something- or something, where everything in Springfield is on the local level.
Do they pay us for doing it?
Excuse me?
We get compensated for doing it?
No, we do not get compensated. Don't get compensated. That's why I mentioned before, Counsel, you know, in all, basically all of the roads, the major roads around all of the other communities are done by state forces.
Are you satisfied with the answers, or do you think we should do something?
Counsel Walsh, I want to thank you again for setting up that maintenance and development meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing everybody to our-
I assume you'll be scheduling a follow-up?
Pardon me?
I assume you'll be scheduling a follow-up meeting?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, may I, it's a snow question, may I beg your indulgence to call a fire commissioner up for, just to, I just want to ask him one quick question, and he can, so we can talk about the fire hydrants while we have him here. So-
Donna didn't want to speak.
Thank you, Commissioner. While we have you here, I just want, we're on TV, and the public needs to know that your department needs help in shoveling out those fire hydrants.
Yes, we request it every storm. We will do it until it's done, and we have done. We've completed all the hydrants that need to be done. The citizens did a great job.
Right.
As I drove around, you know, I saw many, many people out there doing the hydrants. It is, it's taxing on the department to go out there, if we had to do every hydrant in the city. There's over 6,000 hydrants. But we do do them until they're done. And it's a, it's a safety issue, too. We request the public's help, because-
Thank you.
If we pull up and we have to dig out a fire hydrant when a house is on fire, it's going to be a huge delay. It's happened in the past. So whatever help we can get, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I saw some of the fire guys out clearing those hydrants, and thank you. I just thought it was important to have you do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I do see a member of our school committee by regression. I don't know, did you have any questions about the storm? Something else? Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Are there any other reports of committee? All right, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, item number one.
Item number one is the February revenues versus expenditures report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have the February revenue versus expenditure report-
Oh, that's okay, plenty.
-for the city's general fund. As you can see, our revenue is outpacing our expenditures, and this is due in strong part to the fact that the third quarter tax bills have been issued and were due February 1st.
Are there any questions on the report?
No.
Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Item number two, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two is a petition from Columbia Gas for the installation of underground gas facilities in the area of East Springfield. The recommendation from the BPW is to approve.
Recommendation is to approve. Are there any questions or concerns on item number two? Seeing none. All those in favor of accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Item number three, Mr. Clerk.
Item number three is a petition from MGM to widen Bliss Street to create MGM Way, to widen Howard Street, and to widen Union Street. The recommendation from the BPW is to approve.
Counsel Fenton.
Is there anybody here on this particular application?
Good evening. Good evening. For the record, Tim Williams with Allen and Major Associates. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the city council. We're here to address any questions you may have regarding the widening of Bliss Street, creation of MGM Way, Union Street, and Howard Street West, is what we've been calling it.
Mr. President, I couldn't hear clearly what three streets he was talking about.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Essentially, what we're, to create the development area, we were before the commission probably a year ago.
What's the name of the streets? I couldn't hear you say which streets they were.
We're widening Bliss Street, Union Street, we're creating a cul-de-sac at Howard Street West, and we are creating MGM Way.
Sir, how do you propose to widen the street? Where are you taking the space from?
MGM will be essentially giving their land to create another lane on Bliss Street. They'll be donating land to create the widening of Union Street, as well as the cul-de-sac of Howard Street West. They'll be donating land to create those widens of the right-of-way.
Mr. President, with the indulgence of this body, you appointed a casino oversight committee, which I'm chairing. I have a meeting scheduled for, when is it? A week from today to sit with some MGM officials and to go over a timeline for scheduling our first few meetings on the casino project. I don't have any objections about this, but when we're talking about widening the right-of-way for access to MGM, I know that there were abutters that had a variety of issues that related to that in the past during our hearings that we held last February. So unless the applicant tells me that there's some reason that this needs to happen in the next 30 days, I would, I would like to see this be referred to my committee so that we can meet on the subject and discuss that matter and other matters. Is there a business reason, is there a business reason why this needs to happen in the next 30 days?
I don't believe there's a business reason why this couldn't wait for 30 more days.
Okay, then I make a motion to committee, Mr. President.
Motion made by Counsel Fenton, seconded by Counsel Williams, Counsel Walsh on the motion.
On the question, I would like to say I agree. I don't like to have an issue like this with the widening of streets where other businesses are concerned just kind of sprung on us at this meeting without any prior briefing. And I would suggest that in the future, you could apprise us before we get to vote on it, not after. So I'm glad you're going to be able to meet on it, because I think some of these fears were expressed when we had meetings on MGM with the abutters. And I think there's a better way to do this.
Motion made to send the matter to the casino oversight committee. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it? Items number four through 10, Mr. Clerk.
Items four through 10 are petitions from Light Tower for the installation of fiber-optic conduits on State Street, Alden Street, Plainfield Street, School Street, Union Street, and Oakland Street.
Is there a recommendation, Mr. Clerk?
Recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Do we know what the conditions are?
They should be listed in your packet.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Todd Farnoli, Light Tower Fiber Networks.
Is that it?
Counsel Gomez, you have a question?
Can you just tell me what it is that your company does, please?
Excuse me?
Can you tell me what your company does, and what is it that you guys are seeking? Because I'm kind of-
Fiber optic service provider. We offer managed services and dark fiber services.
So what exactly is this system going to be used for?
This is an ongoing effort for the Worcester Public Schools Project. It's a government grant funded by the government to help boast the infrastructure for the public school systems in cities where infrastructure is antiquated, or they don't have many, you know, options for internet service. So we've been before council numerous times for many of these petitions to install new conduit to provide these fiber-optic services to the Worcester, excuse me, Springfield Public Schools.
So it's basically just for like faster internet and-
Internet, correct.
All right.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving with conditions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you.
Item number 11, final item of the night.
The final item on tonight's agenda is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed for the sale of Eureka Street, Lot 134.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Robert Demus, 33 Colorado Street. Appearing for the city of Springfield, Officer Housman.
Is there anything, anything you would like to-
I'm sorry?
Is there anything you would like to present to us?
This is an abutter lot. It's a, an owner-occupant of vacant, vacant city-owned tax-foreclosed parcel since 2011. The city's owned it, it's been off the tax rolls. The abutter applied to, through our abutter lot program to combine it, so it'll be one